Okay, we're good to go. I'm gonna call the Thursday, September 25th, 2025 Planning Board, Special Planning Board Meeting to order. So present, we have Mr. Klukis, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Lopes, Mr. Harding, Mr. Garso, Ms. O'Connell. We have a quorum. Next up is, we have two petitions very similar in nature. I'm gonna read them both off and then we're going to, if the board's, at the board's pleasure, I'm hoping that we could combine these as we have one hearing tonight. First off, we have preliminary plan review for the major land development known as the North Lot for property located at 13 Bristol Ferry Road and Sprague Street, being tax assessors map 28 Lot 24 and 25 Zone Residential R20. Church Community Housing Corporation is seeking a preliminary plan review of a comprehensive permit project pursuant to RIGL 4553-4 for the development of 15 residential dwelling units with at least 25% designated as low to moderate housing units. Third up, also preliminary plan review for major lot land development known as the South Lot, being property located at Zero Turnpike and Zero Sprague, being tax assessors map 28 Lot 4950A and 50C, also zoned residential R20, again Church Community Housing Corporation for this one as well, for the development of 25 residential dwelling units with at least 25% designated as low to moderate income housing units. Petition is present?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Russell Jackson, Miller Scott Holbrook and Jackson, on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Jackson, you just give us your address for the record too, please.
122 Turo Street, Newport.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So as, as you just indicated by referencing the description in the agenda we have before you this evening for preliminary plan review for a comprehensive permit of a major land development. And again, there were actually two separate applications before you this evening. The first relates to 13 Bristol Ferry Road, tax assessors plat 28 lots 24 and 25. And it's referred to in the materials and through the testimony this evening as the North Lot. The second application relates to the property at Zero Sprague Street and Zero Turnpike Avenue, tax assessors plat 28 lots 4958 and 50C. And throughout the materials and the testimony this evening, it's referred to as the South Lot. The North Lot, as you know, is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Turnpike Avenue and Sprague Street. And the South Lot is at the southeast corner of the same intersection. Although two separate applications, this really is an integrated proposal developed by Church Community Housing Corporation. And the same team of witnesses will be testifying to both. The North Lot proposes a total of 15 affordable homeownership units in two buildings with three unit, with a three unit townhouse building, with each townhouse containing a four bedroom unit and a separate 12 unit building with a mix of one, two and three bedroom units. On the South Lot, a single story, excuse me, a single three story building is proposed containing 25 affordable homeownership units with a mix of one, two and three bedroom units. We have a number of members of the development team here this evening set to testify. The presentation will start with Mr. Christian Beldon, the Executive Director of Church Community Housing Corporation. Stephanie Booker is the Real Estate Development Director of Church Community, and she'll be testifying as well. Mike Russell is the Project Civil Engineer, and he'll go through the site utilities, stormwater and OWTS. Melissa Dejardins is the Landscape Architect. Joel Vanderwell is the Project Architect from Union Studio. Paul Bannon is the Project Traffic Engineer. And Doug McLean is the Project Planning and Zoning Experts. Everyone on the team will be available for any questions throughout their testimony or if something comes up when they're done. And if it pleases the board, if you don't have any questions of me, we can start with Mr. Beldon.
Any questions for council, any planning board members?
Please. Thank you.
Good evening, Christian Beldon, Church Community Housing Corporation, 50 Washington Square, Newport, Rhode Island. It's my pleasure to be here before you this evening presenting these developments. This is a, an ownership, a homeownership workforce family housing development. And our team has a very comprehensive, compelling presentation that will cover in detail all of the aspects of the development. What I want to give you is a, some insight into the, the big picture, into the thinking that goes into deciding to pursue a homeownership workforce housing development and how that fits into the larger context of Portsmouth and where it stands in terms of affordable housing with respect to the rest of the state.
I think we'll do it as they come up. That's what we've done before. Is there a need to swear him in as, as the Executive Director? I'm happy to.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, all the witnesses are essentially fact witnesses. He's given a background of the project. And then we've got the other sort of development team members and experts. So maybe it'd be best for the record that everyone is.
Sure, we can do that. Could you raise your right hand, Mr. Beldon? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Portsmouth ranks sixth in the state out of 39 towns and cities in terms of the amount of affordable housing it has. That's 2.66% of the affordable housing stock. And so what does that mean in real terms? That means that of the 8,441 homes in Portsmouth, only 204 are affordable. So there are 33 other towns that have achieved more in terms of affordable housing out of 39 than Portsmouth has. So why then, if we're going to do an affordable housing proposal, are we proposing homeownership and why to serve working families? Well, of those 39 municipalities, Portsmouth ranks 31st as in terms of being the most unaffordable place to own a home. The average home in Portsmouth costs $697,000 a year. In order to afford to purchase that home, you'd need to earn $227,419. So that means that there are only eight municipalities in the state where you would have to earn more to be able to afford to purchase the average home in that municipality. In terms of rental, by contrast, Portsmouth ranks 15th in the state. Evidence of this is that the average two bedroom rent in Portsmouth decreased from $2,169 in 2018 to $2,082 in 2023, a 4% decrease. And the income required to afford this rent is $83,280. Now, don't get me wrong. This does not mean that Portsmouth is doing a great job in terms of providing affordable rental housing. You're still only at 2.66%. Furthermore, the town's comprehensive plan identifies that nearly 60% of the jobs in Portsmouth are held by those who cannot afford to buy or rent locally. So there is massive unmet need for both homeownership and rental housing in Portsmouth. However, the need is greater for homeownership. Then, of those 204 existing affordable homes, only 6% or 12 units are for families. The vast majority of the remaining 204 units, 82% or 167 units, are for the elderly. And the balance, the remaining 12%, 25 units, are homes for the disabled. So of the 204 affordable housing units that comprise the 2.66% affordable housing stock that you have, 12 are available for families. So that is why we've chosen to pursue homeownership and why we've chosen to pursue family development. And when I say workforce family development, these are gonna be homeownership condominiums. People will need to go to the bank. They'll need to submit their income to get a mortgage to be able to buy these condos. So these are the people working in your community. That 60% stated in the town's own comp plan that work here but can't afford to buy here. And with that, oh, I guess last to wrap it up. As you know, the Ade Bethune House, the Portsmouth Senior Center project is well under construction. If, once that's occupied and if this receives permitting approval and funding approval, we build it and rent it up. The additional 94 units created through that development, this development would increase the percentage of affordable housing in Portsmouth to 3.88%. Thank you.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up quickly, Mr. Beldon. So obviously Church Community, this is essentially the business that Church Community is in, creating projects for affordable housing, for workforce housing, things of that nature, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we are a nonprofit real estate development organization that works to address the housing goals and needs of the municipalities that we work in, which has been almost exclusively the municipalities in Newport County since 1969.
Okay, and so as part of the mission of Church Community Housing, you certainly, in your position as Executive Director, familiar with the Enabling Act of Rhode Island relative to comprehensive permits, correct?
Correct.
So when you're putting together a project proposal and developing a plan, you're very conscious of the required findings for the approval of a comprehensive permit, major land development. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
So not to go through each one specifically, but you are, you are familiar with the six required findings that this board needs to, to reach in order to approve this project, correct?
Correct.
And is it your testimony that the development plan that's before the board this evening was put together at your direction with the goal and objective of meeting those six criteria?
Absolutely.
And it's your testimony that you believe this project does meet those six criteria for the granting of a comprehensive permit, major land development?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Before you go, Mr. Beldon, any board member have a question for Mr. Beldon? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get your name and address for the record first.
Stephanie Booker, 50 Washington Square, Newport, Rhode Island.
Do you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Ms. Booker, why don't you describe your position with Church Community to the board? And I know that you're gonna follow up on Christian's comments and give some more background and information regarding the development of this project, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm the Real Estate Development Director at Church Community Housing Corporation. I assist in all of the development activities that happen there. And, you know, we, as a team, support everything that goes on and help prepare all of the applications that go in for all of these developments. With that, I'm gonna provide an quick overview of the project because some of it's already been touched on. And then I will address all of the questions and concerns that came up during the concept review that happened in August. Leah, can you just drop right there? Perfect, thank you. The overall project proposed is a mixed income development consisting of 40 homeownership condominiums on what will become two lots across the street on Sprague Street. The project aims to provide affordable homeownership opportunities to individuals and families. This aligns with the town of Portsmouth's comprehensive plan and revitalizes the currently blighted parcels in what will become a vibrant housing community. On slide one, I am presenting here what is the affordability mix using the area median income guidelines produced by HUD. We are proposing 11 units of 50% area median income, 11 units of 80% area median income, nine units of 100% and nine units of 120%. Next slide. We already addressed this. The unit mix for this development is 16 units of one bedroom, 15 two bedroom, six three bedroom and three, three bed, four bedroom, sorry. Next slide. The North Lot, also known as 13 Bristol Ferry Road and Zero Sprague Street, is a development, we're proposing two buildings on one lot. The first building is a 12 unit walk-up. It contains four one bedrooms, six two bedroom and two three bedroom. The second building contains three townhouse style apart housing units, four bedrooms each. There is one accessible unit on this lot. And to address the parking concerns that were raised during the concept review meeting, we've added two spaces to the North Lot for a total of 19 onsite parking spaces with overflow parking provided on the South Lot. Next slide. On the South Lot, we're proposing one three story elevated building which will contain 25 housing units, 12 one bedroom, nine two bedroom and four three bedroom. There will be two accessible units on this lot. And we are providing 48 total parking spaces. And this is an increase of two more parking spaces than originally presented during the concept design review. There will also be a fitness center on the first floor that will serve both the North and South Lot, all residents. Now I'd like to address the concerns and questions that came up during the concept design. Leah, can you just drop to the next one? Thank you. The first question that we were asked to address was the increase in population with the addition of this development. Using the U.S. Census American Community Survey data for Portsmouth, charted in the lower right hand corner, the total population increase will be 95 residents. Next slide. The second question we were asked to address was how many school age students will be added? Again, we use the U.S. Census ACS data for Portsmouth, charted in the lower right hand corner as well. And the total amount of school age children is expected to be 23. Next slide. Slide eight illustrates the decline in population of 120 residents per year as reported by the U.S. Census ACS for Portsmouth, Rhode Island. The project is expected to be at 100% occupancy in 2027. This chart compares the population decline with and without the proposed development over a 10-year period, illustrating that the impact of the development on services, public safety and the school system are minimal based on population. Next slide. Which leads into the analysis of public safety and DPW personnel with the addition of this development. Using the 2024 Portsmouth Annual Report staffing figures, utilizing the per cap method, this slide provides a comparison of the current staffing. Then the second column is with this development and third column is adjusted for the negative 120 residents that are expected to leave Portsmouth. This slide shows that if the project was to come online today, the staffing requirements are essentially unchanged from the current staffing levels. In addition, the departments reviewed this proposal development during TRC and did not raise any concerns regarding staffing. The remaining item that we were asked to address during concept plan review was regarding traffic and parking, to which we have provided a traffic study completed by Paul Bannon of Crossman Engineering. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anyone from the board have questions? So just to summarize on the parking, you've added two spots on the north and two spots in the south?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then this particular slide, because there is a declining population, you're saying that at full buildout, we'll be below where we are right now from a staffing level?
Yes.
Okay.
Slightly.
Slightly.
No, so on the decline, no, you're up slightly, I believe. Hold on one second, I can't actually see that slide. I don't have my glasses on, truth be told. It's up slightly.
Up slightly, okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Stephanie, I'm just gonna ask the same question I asked of Christian again. You're part of the development team and it was Church Community does these projects. You're keenly aware of the requirements for the granting of a comprehensive permit project, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the six requirements that apply to this project, correct?
Yes.
And it's your testimony that the project as presented meets those six criteria. Is that fair to say?
Yes, I believe it does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If it's okay for me to just provide a little more context?
Please do.
Because we've been reviewing this in the office. And I think actually Leah, if you just back up one slide, I think, and zoom in a little bit on that slide? If it's possible.
There we go.
Great. So to me, this slide really tells the whole story about the impact of this development relative to community service provision in terms of demand for police, fire, public works, school staffing. You know, the, the town has been losing on average 120 residents per year. And so that top blue line just shows that consistent decline as forecasted using that ACS data. And then the line below it is exactly the same line, except in 2027, it shows that we add 95 residents in a year that you're losing 120 residents. So in that year, you still have a declining population. It only declines by 25 residents instead of 120 residents. And so overall, this development or not, the demand for police, fire, public works, schooling is going down. And on the next slide, it shows what the current population is and then adds that 95, those 95 residents to it. And so that is a larger number. But that number then doesn't subtract the 120 people that you have to expect you're gonna lose that year, which then actually does show a negative demand for staffing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Beldon from the board? Thank you.
We're gonna have Mike Russell come up now, the Project Engineer.
I think Mike knows the drill. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Russell, 207 High Point Avenue here in Portsmouth.
Could you just raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, good evening. Mike Russell, LDC Engineering Consulting. We, our office is the civil engineering consultant for the project on behalf of Church Community Housing. So for our portion of the presentation tonight, we prepared two exhibits, one for the north and one for the south, which are essentially exhibits that you saw and we talked about in the concept plan meeting last month. So I'll start by summarizing some of the changes. Oh, you want me to stop you when you get there? There you go. So that is the North Lot, so I guess we can start with that. If any of the board members or if, I know that we're all kind of squinting up at the screen. I actually have handouts, reduced copies, if, if you wanna complement the screen with a handout. You do.
Like, I think we have the Union Studio presentation with us.
Okay, very good.
Is this one?
No, it's what you're seeing on the screen, so I'm.
I thought that was in there. Okay. Yeah, I thought I saw it. I thought I saw it, yeah. Okay, sorry about that.
All right, no worries. Okay, so we've got the, the North Lot here on the screen. I've kind of went in over in detail the, the characteristics of this lot during concept. Happy to talk about that again if need be. But as Stephanie pointed out earlier, the two primary changes to this project is we added two parking spaces, and that's to the north of the lot and that, and that bump out of the property. And that was, that came out of discussion at the concept plan meeting, both the concerns of a Butters and then also of some of the board members. Additionally, we modified the driveway radius at Sprague Street to increase that. And that was at the request of the Fire Chief during Technical Review Committee. So some of the other characteristics of the, of the site have remained the same. The building footprints, the building footprint locations, hardscape, just general overall arrangement of the site is pretty much the same. Since we met with you last, we had done some formal, additional formal testing with Rhode Island D I M, D E M for the purposes of the onsite wastewater treatment systems. And those were done for both lots. We've also advanced our design and planning in preparation for permitting, long range permitting down the line with the state. As we mentioned in the concept plan meeting, one of the unique things about the nature of this project, the category of this project is we're allowed to come before you before going to the state. Normal application, we would have to go to the state before we came to the planning board or zoning board. So just wanted to reemphasize that. So before we jump to the South Lot, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions on the North before we switch the slide.
Any board members have questions for Mr. Russell on this lot? Okay, please proceed.
Okay, so here's the South Lot. So again, largely the same thing that you were looking at last month. As I mentioned earlier, we added two spaces to the overall parking, the position of the, of the curb cuts, the circulation of the site, parking location, building footprint location, hardscape, and then subsurface infrastructure, drainage and septic are all, for the most part, in the same position. As I mentioned, that process is continually being refined and evolved in preparation to go to the state once we are done at, at town level. I described the, the site in detail during concept. I'm happy to answer any particular questions about the site. But just to touch on utilities and then I'll, I'll bring the north back into that. So the full complement of utilities is afforded to both of these properties in the way of water, municipal water, power and gas. So both of these projects will be serviced by gas, municipal water, power and onsite wastewater treatment. So that, that's just a, a quick summary of the, of the changes and, and just to reemphasize to the board that what you're looking at here tonight is essentially what you looked at last month. So any particular questions about the South Lot? I'm happy to answer those as well.
Any questions for Mr. Russell? I just have one. What, could you just go over again what the proposed jellyfish unit is?
Okay, so that, that is a, that is a proprietary water quality treatment unit for stormwater. So it's a real effective unit. It's, it works well in sites that are challenged by stormwater design. It has very effective results. It's gaining popularity amongst the consultants throughout Rhode Island. And, and D E M is, is very fond of it. So that's, that's the reason for that selection.
So it's a treatment unit itself?
Treatment unit itself, an inline treatment unit, yes.
Great. So go right ahead. I've got one question for Ms. Wilson.
What is the maintenance requirement on the one of those units? Are they supposed to be cleaned out once a year, every five years?
No, I think it's, I think it's multiple times a year. I believe it's twice a year is my, my recollection, yeah. So it's, it's not any different than any other proprietary structural product, hydrodynamic product that basically separates particulates from the water. So it's same idea here. So they have, they have filter cartridges. The cartridges get replaced every so often. I believe it's every six months.
Thank you.
So Mike, if I could, I know that this is, both lots are unique in their own. So Mike, if I could, I know that this is, both lots are unique in their own ways, and part of what drives the layout of the buildings, parking circulation, really is the OWTS systems as well as stormwater management. Can you just touch on those a little bit for the board?
Yeah, so I guess in short, is all of the board members aware, the town of Portsmouth has very restrictive soils and high groundwater. So with that creates a high demand on drainage systems and septic systems, especially in their footprints. So they create large areas that are required, which have setbacks associated with them. So those setbacks have to be met, or, you know, in this case, we are, we are approaching these, these site plans as if we've already been to D E M. So we want to make it comply with their requirements, DOT's requirements, and also the town's requirements to the, to the extent we can. So that's the biggest challenges are soil type, groundwater, and setbacks in relation. Now, these are, you know, this is a, this is a large development for this lot. This is a little over an acre and a half. So in order to meet all of the planning requirements and then engineering requirements, that is, it really puts a premium on stormwater and wastewater.
Okay, Mike, and if I could, there's, of those six required findings, there's a few that I think speak to your sort of area of expertise here. So from an engineering perspective, in terms of the matters that you just discussed, stormwater management, OWTS, neither the north or the south lot, there'll be no significant negative impacts on that health and safety of current or future residents of the community, again, in relation to the aspects that you've just testified to, correct?
Yes.
All right. And although I know we mentioned it during conceptual, it wasn't discussed yet, but on both the proposed north and south lot, there is a merger of multiple lots, correct?
Yes, correct. If the board recalls from concept plan, the north lot is comprised of two parcels. The intent is to merge those parcels via administrative subdivision plan. The south lot is comprised of three parcels with the same intent to merge all three. They're all under common ownership, I believe, so each one of those conditions. So that is, that is the intent ultimately on both.
Obviously, the new merged lots will both have adequate permanent physical access to public street, correct?
Correct.
And lastly, this proposed development is not going to create any individual lots with the physical strings to development, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Hold on one, Mike. Any further questions for this witness? Okay, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, we have the landscape architect, Melissa DeJardin, to testify.
Good evening, Melissa DeJardin, 456 Water Street in Portsmouth. I am the landscape architect, so prior.
So before you get started, you just raise your right hand to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
So each of the two developments will provide residents opportunities for outdoor enjoyment. The first on the north lot, there's a central patio space that would have permeable concrete pavers, hanging cafe lights that would kind of create like a nice cozy effect with some dining tables. Budget permitting, we would have some kind of water feature in the middle there. There's maybe some benches around there, a bench to the back, just for some, someone to kind of escape for a quiet book. We added some bike racks that's kind of at the end of one of those parking spaces. Potentially, those could be customizable. Can kind of see in the top some, some pictures there. Along the front, in front of the central patio space, we're trying to relate to parts of Portsmouth, so a split rail fence with some trees. And in front of that is not actually owned by us, but we could kind of take care of that space with this kind of a low ground cover. There's a low bush, low bush blueberry sod that you can kind of just unravel, and that'd be kind of a nice, easy, low maintenance ground cover. In front of the building, as you approach at the entry, it's not a lot of room for planting, so we, again, budget permitting would have some kind of arbor system just to soften the building, could have some vines across the front. So it's kind of what you're seeing, those lines kind of jetting out there. Because of those stormwater, the septic features, we can't use vegetation as a buffer for the whole property line, but along where we can, there's a lot of existing pine trees, so we would, I would try to use its varying sizes of pines to make it look very natural. And then we would go to a nice fence where we can't use vegetation. The next slide, please. South lot, we have similar patio spaces, larger buildings, so there's a couple of more. The main, there's two larger ones. Of course, there could be maybe some kind of decorative feature, the one closer to the building, and then maybe a secondary one where there's some potential storage building in the lower right-hand corner there, where maybe there could be some grills. I'm also kind of showing in both properties, you'll see me calling out things that maybe potentially residents couldn't implement in the future, because we don't know who's going to live there yet. But just because we can't plant where those septics are, I think it would be a nice thing to have like raised garden, garden boxes, or if there's enough kids, you can, there's a hill on the back steep, maybe there's something you can incorporate into the hillside. But, you know, it doesn't make sense to put those in until you know who's living there. So I just, they could keep this plan, and the condo association could always implement those things in the future. So we also included some more bike racks near the front plaza area, I'm calling it on plaza front area, because we could have it be flush with some nice decorative bollards and some kind of decorative paving that kind of spills out. So if you can kind of imagine like a hotel where it kind of all feels more of a grand space instead of just a small entry, it feels more welcoming with that front area. And again, a nice kind of nod to Portsmouth is some stone walls because of the stormwater. We have to raise that front corner up, so there'd be a couple of terraces of stone walls to kind of bring that, that grade up to, for stormwater management. Across the south, there is a really nice existing blue spruce, so to kind of have that buffer, I'd kind of introduce some more blue spruces and then some arbor variety to kind of thicken up that buffer edge. And then on the east side, can't do as much vegetation, so there'd be another fence there. I think you've seen the photo metrics, but it would be a similar lighting scheme as at the senior center, same kind of bollards and the lights directional into the parking areas, and then the, those, the low-level baller lights whenever possible. So. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the landscape architect? I did, I did note on the, on the plan just submitted, it's a wide mix and variety of plantings. It's very interesting.
Is that good or bad?
So these will all, and obviously, the long-term maintenance of this will all be incorporated into the condo association, I assume, that everyone will share in that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we could call Joel Vanderweal up now, he's the project architect.
Hi there. Joel Vanderweal, project architect from Union Studio. Address is 160 Mathewson Street in Providence.
You just, thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. So at Union Studio, our, our goal, our mission is to create places of value by really emphasizing the value of place. Next one. Founded in 2001, our mission is really to create projects that cultivate civic value and civic worth. We have got offices in Providence and Philadelphia, and have grown to 36 employees of architects' planners' support. Our goal is to use the power of design to enrich lives and strengthen communities. Next slide. And we do that through a variety of projects, student housing, single-family homes, affordable housing, hotel, meeting space, all, all different kinds of projects, but all of them with the through line of creating a civic impact in the communities that they're built in. Next slide. About 70% of what we do is housing, and about half of that is affordable housing, and it's really across all different kinds of project types and scales, from neighborhoods and pocket communities to infill sites, moderate rehabs, and prototypes. Now I'll get into the project specifics. This is the three-unit townhouse building on the north lot. So as has been mentioned, each of these would have nearly identical four-bedroom units, living space on the ground floor, bedrooms above, really using sort of New England vernacular forms, pitched roofs, clabbered siding, shingles in the dormers and in some of the gables. We really are making an effort to bring the scale of the project down as much as possible while still meeting the programmatic goals. So that means bringing the lowest points of the roof forms down at the property perimeter where it meets the public realm. So you'll notice on the left-hand side of this image, we've got what affronts as a two-story building, really, but still making use of some usable space on that, in that attic level. Next slide. Floor plans, if you are interested in buying one of them, I guess. Next slide. So this is the other building that's on the north lot. This is a 12-unit walk-up, we're calling it. It's a single stair shared in the middle. Again, trying to create a sense that these buildings are siblings of a sort, but at different scales, so using a lot of the same architectural elements with the pitched roof and the clabbered siding, larger in scale, but still doing the same thing of keeping the scale down at the corners of the building where it meets the public realm. Floor plan's probably a little too small for you to interpret on the screen, but if you have any questions about them, I'm happy to answer. Next slide, please. Shifting to the south lot, this is the 25-unit multifamily building with an elevator in it and a fitness center on the top elevation that's at the far right. Again, this is an increase in scale from the other buildings, but using a lot of the same design elements, so the corner boards, the clabbards, double-hung windows, eve returns, and a full dormer across the third floor to really create the impression that this is a two, two-and-a-half-story building that happens to have some living space in the attic level. There's a porch along turnpike, sort of soften the edge where it meets, where it's closest to the public realm. And the primary entrance would be on the opposite side towards the parking lot. Next slide. Again, floor plans, one more. So in general, across the lots, what we're trying to do is shape the space without overwhelming it, create the best first impression that we can by presenting a handsome face with a lawn and the most refined elevations of the building facing the public realm, and then putting infrastructure behind as much as possible so that this contributes to the public realm instead of just extracting from it. Again, using New England vernacular forms, pitched roofs, clabbered siding, double-hung windows, the things that people in Portsmouth are familiar with and are used to seeing. And so, and really leaning into that two-and-a-half-story presentation across. The one thing to note on the site plan, per code, we're not technically required to sprinkler the townhouses, but there were some concerns about the proximity of those two buildings, of the 12-unit and the three-unit, so we are, we have opted to sprinkler the townhouse buildings to address those concerns. I think that's it for architecture. Any questions from the board?
So just to be clear then, that the entire project is sprinkled, is that correct?
Yes, all three buildings will be sprinkled.
Thank you. No further questions here.
Thanks. And just, again, I know you mentioned it a couple of times, the new vernacular, if you will, and materials that are proposed. So in essence, you've, you've, as the project architect, obviously are familiar now with the requirements under the comprehensive permit statute. And as it relates to the architecture itself, you've come up with this, this design with the purpose and intent of meeting the requirements of the comprehensive permit, correct?
That is correct.
And specifically, this is unique because it's not a mix of affordable versus non-affordable, which the statute speaks to. These are all affordable units, correct?
That's right.
And so they're all, in terms of scale, architectural style, they're all consistent.
That's right.
Have another questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Paul Bannon, senior project director at Crossman Engineering, 100 Jefferson Boulevard in Warwick, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, Paul, if you could just give quickly your, sort of your background and some of your CV information to the board, and I'll ask the board at that point if you'll accept Mr. Bannon as an expert traffic engineer.
1982 graduate, University of Rhode Island, civil and environmental engineering. I've been practicing traffic engineering, transportation engineering in the state for the last 40 years. I've been qualified as an expert witness in over 39 communities in Rhode Island and Massachusetts as an expert in Superior Court in Rhode Island and Massachusetts. I've testified in Portsmouth, not recently, but over the years with two planning, zoning, and council.
I'll ask the board, can we get a motion to certify Mr. Bannon as an expert in the field of traffic and civil engineering? So get a motion made in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Thank you.
Thank you. Crossman was retained to conduct a traffic impact study for the residential project. In order to complete that effort, the following tasks were completed. We conducted a review of the site plans that were prepared by Mr. Russell to ensure that the site design and access provide adequate and safe access. We conducted site visits different times of the day, days of the week, to observe traffic conditions. We completed a traffic counting program, including automatic traffic record accounts on Turnpike Ave, and also peak hour turning movement counts at the intersection of Turnpike, Bristol Ferry, and Sprague. During both summer, August conditions, and when school was back in session in September, we inventoried the project area for land use, existing roadway conditions, horizontal, vertical geometry of the roadway, to ensure that adequate site distances can be provided at the, at the driveway access points. We requested accident data from the police department to determine if there are any concerns relative to the safety of the intersection and immediate roadways that'll provide access to the site. Then we developed a trip generation estimate for the residential use, and then we assessed the safety and operations of that, existing and future conditions of the servicing roadways. The residential redevelopment project is, as described, is proposed on two properties on the northeast and southeast quadrants of the intersection. The northern property contains approximately three-quarters of acres, acres. It was fully developed. It was fully developed with a single commercial building. That building had previously been, most recently, is a daycare uh, facility, educational center uh, that moved in two thousand and nineteen, uh, and it's been vacant since. The southern property is approximately an acre and a half, and it's uh, primarily, primarily a cleared grass lot. Land use in the area, uh, immediate areas predominantly residential along Bristol Ferry uh, and uh, Sprague Street. There's non-residential properties that include the high school to the south, uh, the Portsmouth Senior Center and, and uh, Ragged Island Brewery to the north. Turnpike Ave, briefly going over the, the roadway infrastructure, Turnpike Ave um, is an urban principal arterial, uh, extending between Boyd's Lane to the north and East Main to the south. Uh, it provides immediate local access to properties, uh, but also to higher-order roadways such as Route twenty-four. In the project area, it's approximately forty-four feet wide. Along the property frontage, it's a four-lane road, but to the south, it transitions back to a two-lane road. Uh, that's to improve the capacity at the, at the intersection. Uh, it's, there's concrete sidewalks um, provided along the property frontage. This section of Turnpike Ave uh, services roughly six thousand seven hundred and fifty vehicles per day. That translates for the morning, peak hour between seven and eight, roughly five hundred and sixty-five vehicles per hour. Two hundred and fifty, fifteen northbound, three hundred and fifty, southbound. Sprague Street during that same period in the morning services roughly three hundred and fifteen vehicles. The PM peak occurs in the late afternoon between uh, four-thirty, five-thirty with approximately five hundred and eighty vehicles per hour along off property frontage. And Sprague Street during that same period services roughly two hundred and fifty vehicles per hour. Sprague Street is a roughly half-mile-long section of road between Turnpike and, and East Main. Uh, in adjacent to the site, it's roughly twenty-five feet wide with a single lane in each direction, but at the intersection it widens out to provide a separate right-turn lane, uh, which is restricted to, on, on red. Uh, that section of road is scheduled uh, for upgrade by the Department of Transportation within the next two years, uh, so that'll include uh, resurfacing, sidewalks, curbing, striping uh, in, in stormwater. Reviewing safety, the geometry, geometry of the roadways adjacent to the driveways uh, were investigated uh, to determine or make sure that adequate stop, stopping site distances are available along Sprague Street involving both the north and south lot. Uh, site distances are greater than five hundred feet to the east and west. The required stopping site distances for the posted speed would be two hundred and fifty feet uh, and three hundred and fifty feet based on a design speed of, of forty miles an hour. So we meet the, the ASHTO criteria along uh, Sprague Street. Uh, for Turnpike, site distances run restricted over seven hundred and fifty feet uh, to the north and south. Uh, with the posted speed limit of forty, uh, that requires a three hundred and five-foot site distance, so we have, you know, more than twice um, for the design speed, which is five miles an hour over, which is also the eighty-fifth percentile speed because we um, obtained actual speed data along that segment of road, which is forty-four, forty-five. Uh, so we satisfied that criteria also. Uh, upon completing a review of existing conditions, we assessed um, and the future conditions by adding uh, site-related vehicle trips using the ITE Trip Generation Manual. Project of this size and, and, and use, we would expect approximately three, thirty-five trips in the morning and thirty-eight trips in the afternoon.
Paul, can I interrupt for a second? Just, could you clarify, what is the ITE Trip Manual? Would you just describe that and how it's used by uh, traffic engineers um, in your field of expertise?
I'm, I'm sure you've heard before. The IT Trip Generation Manual is a document that traffic engineers utilize um, to estimate vehicle trips, person trips, uh, transit trips um, for land use, uh, different types of land uses, whether it's residential, commercial in nature. It's been, data has been collected over fifty years. Um, it's regularly uh, updated uh, to capture current trends in, you know, for land uses. So it's a, it's the basis of what we use is uh, in the traffic engineering industry and accepted uh, by both state and uh, local communities. So using that manual and my experience over the years, this size and type of, of development, we generate roughly thirty-five trips in the morning. That would be eight entering, twenty-seven exiting, and during the PM, twenty-four uh, entering and fourteen exiting. I feel those numbers are conservative, meaning high, uh, based on the type of land use, uh, and in the manual, there's uh, a basis of uh, to calculate the, the trips, whether it's an average rate or an equation. I use the, the equation in this case. But the equation is uh, generates much higher than what we would expect for this because of the data set uh, for, in developing the equation where it's based on projects uh, with over two hundred units typically, uh, where we're down to forty. And the base equation starts with twenty, so you could have a ten-unit project using the equation, you'd have twenty trips, which is just not practical. So to be conservative in our study, we used the, the equation. Uh, as part of our effort, we looked at existing conditions, at the main study signaledized intersection of, of Turnpike with, with Sprague. Under future conditions, we uh, looked at that intersection, how we're, how adding our traffic affected it in base growth, and then also driveway intersections. As seen on the plans, a single driveway um, is proposed on Sprague Street for both the north and southern lot, and there's a secondary access on Turnpike for the southern lot. Based on uh, our, my review of the project area intersection operations, we've recommended and will pursue with the Department of Transportation that Turnpike Ave access be, uh, allow full access in, but be restricted out to a right turn only, because the left turn from that site can easily and more safely be made at the Sprague Street intersection. So that's what we're going to pursue uh, for access on Turnpike Ave. Reviewing the operational analysis, the intersection today operates at a good level service B during the AM and PM peak periods, uh, that will continue with the addition of that amount of traffic that we're proposing, uh, adding one or two seconds of time. The driveways would operate a good level of service B or better. You typically have one car on the driveway waiting to turn onto the main roadways. So with that, uh, with the information we've collected, the analysis we completed, we've determined that safe and adequate access can be provided uh, to the projects. Uh, in addition, we do have to go to the DOT as part of our state review process to gain access to the state highways, so they will also be reviewing our report, plans to ensure that safe and adequate access can be provided. Available for any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bannon? Please, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, so the intersection, uh, what is the level of service?
B.
And increasing thirty-five cars coming in and thirty-eight?
Over an hour.
Impact?
No, and I noticed, and I spoke with DOT about it, um, I don't know how long it's been happening, um, but the West Main right turn, right lane loop detector is malfunctioning. Um, I noticed on several, number of occasions, uh, it skipped that phase and resulted in backups on, on West Main, uh, so DOT is aware of that, uh, and will be addressing it.
That's specifically the traffic coming from the west to, to turn onto either Bristol Ferry?
Yeah, the, the through a double left, so yeah, I witnessed uh, in the two hours, one, two-hour period, uh, it skipped that phase three separate times uh, for three to four phases, and people just sitting there, going nowhere for extended period, uh, and starting to get frustrated. So I, I actually spoke to the police department on it and also followed up with the DOT.
So once that's fixed, it'll actually improve some of that circuit?
Yes, yes.
But just a follow-on question, you had mentioned that DOT does have a plan to upgrade this intersection, or was it West Main Road? I, I?
They have a project limits include from East Main to this intersection, and then from this intersection uh, all the way on West Main. I'm not sure where the southern project limits are, but it's an, it's an extended uh, length of road, uh, that was advertised this spring, uh, and it, it's, should start construction later this year.
But, but nothing that you propose is going to impede that, is that?
No, no, and we will coordinate with the DOT, uh, specifically along our Sprague Street frontage. Uh, we, we're gonna need to do utilities, uh, and also put in those, the uh, driveways.
And if I remember correctly, as part of their review, they'll incorporate their follow-on plans and, and give you recommendations based on that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bannon from the board? Okay.
Thank you very much.
I think Mr. Russell wants to say some things.
Very quickly, just, just to be clear, Paul, you submitted um, a comprehensive report uh, as part of materials with this preliminary plan, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, and is it uh, your testimony that you adopt all the conclusions and findings set forth in your report as part of your testimony this evening?
Yes, I.
With this development as proposed, both the north and the south lot, is there anything in regards to this development which would cause or raise any safety concerns from your perspective as an expert traffic engineer?
With the recommendations we've made as part of the, the study, uh, we feel that safe and adequate access can be provided uh, to both lots.
All right, so uh, by incorporating the recommendations set forth in your report, uh, is it your testimony that this project will not increase any type of safety hazard or negatively impact public health or safety?
It will not.
Lastly, um, at least in terms of traffic and circulation, is it your testimony that this uh, proposal as built will not cause any degradation of the level of service in terms of the adjacent roadways or the intersection?
It will not degrade the level of service at, at the main study intersection we reviewed.
Okay. And lastly, you did, you did include as part of your materials, uh, an analysis of the parking that's provided on-site, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Can you take a few minutes just to go through that as well?
Sure. Um, we just provide, provided that information as the backup based on uh, questions that were asked at the previous board uh, meeting. Um, we provided a review of the ITE Trip Generation, well, Parking Generation Manual, it's the sister of the, the Trip Generation Manual, um, using their uh, rates uh, to determine what would be appropriate. Um, again, they've done thousands of studies at different types of land uses, and this is the, the uh, rates that they've developed. Um, with the ITE, the, you know, maximum rate per unit is one point three-one. Um, we are providing one point six-seven. I've also done analysis of uh, multiple uh, apartment-type developments, um, specifically in Warwick, larger, uh, you know, seven hundred unit-type facilities, um, where, you know, they look to have between one point five and one seven-five uh, for multi-unit buildings. So we fall within that uh, range, uh, and, you know, they've been doing, renting those facilities for, for decades, uh, and have found no issues using that, that rate. Um, and we fall within that rate and well above the, the one point three from the ITE. So we feel that we have sufficient parking uh, for, for the project itself.
Any, any questions for Mr. Bannon on the parking analysis? Please, Dave.
I'd, I'd feel the right person to ask, but uh, as people were to buy these units, how would you determine how many parking spots they would get?
I'm not sure how specific, how specifically they will address the uh, the parking requirements or restrictions, whether it's a one-bedroom, you get one, uh, one and two-bedroom, you get one, and the larger units you get two, um, and, or, and/or they're assigned. So I'm, I'm not sure exactly how they're going to treat it, uh, but we feel overall uh, there's sufficient parking, whether they need to actually assign, that can be out of the gate, or it could be uh, a year after when they determine, you know, where people are parking and what they're using uh, and their needs, uh, to see if they need to um, assign parking, indoor limit, parking per unit, vehicles per unit.
Can I answer your question?
There is a, you know, they'll, they'll be a homeowner's, it's condominium, homeowners' association will have requirements uh, for their uh, tenants, but, or the building occupancy, occupants.
Maybe that's a follow-on question for Mr. Russell. Is it, is the condo documents going to assign a spot per, per unit? And if you don't know right now, that's fine, I just don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I don't, I was just checking with Mr. Bell, then we haven't sort of gotten to that point to determine whether or not, once the declaration is prepared, whether each unit will be assigned specific spots, or whether or not it's essentially available, you know, to all residents. Again, keeping in mind, there's a significant surplus, if you will, of spots on the south lot that will assist in servicing the whole project.
Yeah, that, you know, they could potentially restrict the northern lot um, to assign spaces with overflow on the back lot. But, you know, that's, it, just to show that it's, it's manageable and, and they can handle it as, as warranted.
Any other questions for this witness? Please, Mr. O'Connell.
Could you? Yeah. Gotcha. Um, how are you going to manage, like, the crossings of the street there? Are you going to put in a separate cross lane? Is that, would that be your area, or? You know, people are parking across the street, are they just going to be running across the middle of Sprague Street, or is it going to be a separate crossing?
No.
Aside from the corner?
No, we, we would promote use of the crossing at the traffic signal that's actuated.
Okay.
Any other questions? You could? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could now call Doug McLean.
First, I'd name an address for the record, please.
Doug, Doug McLean, Two Carriage Trail, Barrington, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hey Doug, why don't, if you could, just go through your background and your um, experience uh, for the board, please?
Sure. Uh, I have twenty years of experience working as a professional planner in the state of Rhode Island. Uh, I received a master's degree in planning from the University of Massachusetts uh, back in two thousand and seven. Um, I've been a certified planner uh, through the American Institute of Certified Planners uh, since two thousand and nine. Uh, my background includes a mix of private consulting work, and I've worked for uh, the, the public sector and the communities of North Kingstown, South Kingstown, Cranston, and Coventry. Uh, currently serve as the planning director in Coventry. Um, I've been accepted as an expert witness in front of dozens of boards in the state, and I did have, uh, along with the two reports I submitted, uh, my CV was included for the record, if there's any additional questions.
Mr. Chairman, we'd ask that he be accepted as an expert in the fields of planning and zoning?
Could we get a motion to that effect? That Mr. McLean is an expert in the field of community planning?
Make a motion that we accept. Okay, sorry.
Like to make a motion that we accept Mr. McLean as an expert witness.
I'll check back.
All right, we got a motion made in second. Uh, I'll call for vote, all in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug, why don't you just, if you could, just walk through uh, sort of uh, the steps you undertook when you were engaged, uh, scope of work and what your findings and conclusions are in relation to both the north and the south lot, please?
Sure. Um, conducted a thorough review of both properties uh, through a site walk, uh, review of the uh, town's uh, zoning ordinance, the town's comprehensive plan, uh, as well as mapping analysis to understand the subject properties in relation to the surrounding area. Um, the analysis and conclusions that I drew are conclusions that I drew are itemizing the two reports, one for each lot. And tonight I just want to provide a very, very high level summary of what's in those reports and then be available for questions. And I know that there's a desire for me to make some very specific statements and read the findings towards the end of my presentation for the record. So, you know, basically, we've been talking about the south and north lot. I'm going to present them together. I'll have a few sections where I detail where there's some nuances in each site. And I think I'm going to focus first on the shared strengths of both projects, what unites them in purpose and in approach, and then I'll jump into the site specific differences later. So let me begin with what I find to be the most important point, specifically with a comprehensive permit application, and that's addressing housing needs. And these proposals directly address Portsmouth's critical housing needs. And these two developments, all 40 units, are 100% deed restricted as affordable. They'll serve households from a range of 50% to 120% of the area median income. That means they are a mix. They're meant for those of the designed as the very low income portions. They're designed for those moderate income portions of the population. This is your working families, your teachers, your first responders, other members of the local workforce who are facing the challenge of being priced out of Portsmouth. As the board is aware, Portsmouth remains below the 10% of affordable housing threshold. Based on recent Housing Works data, only about 2.7% of the housing stock is affordable. That data is now about a year old, so I understand there may be updates to that data more recently, but it is still certainly below the 10%. That means that the tool of a comprehensive permit is a valid tool to consider a project of this nature. At the same time, the median single income housing price in Portsmouth is nearly $700,000. Again, based on that Housing Works data, to afford a home in Portsmouth, you'd need to earn over $220,000 a year as a household. The median income in Portsmouth is just about $100,000. So there's a disparity in the cost that you would need to achieve homeownership of the average household and the average income in Portsmouth. This income disparity, this income discrepancy highlights the need for these two projects. So the need is urgent. These 40 affordable homes are not going to solve the Portsmouth's housing needs just by themselves, but they represent a very real, meaningful step towards closing the gap on the town's housing goals. And they do so in a way that, in my professional opinion, is thoughtful, well designed, and consistent with the neighborhood context. I'm going to hit two of the points that I discussed in my report. One is neighborhood compatibility. And then after that, I'll talk about the comprehensive plan consistency. So neighborhood compatibility is always a central concern for any project, any land use project. And I think both of these sites do do have, do exemplify good neighborhood compatibility metrics. Both these sites have a history of nonconforming commercial uses. The south lot was once a gas station and a service shop. That ended in 2001 and the site has been vacant since. The north lot hosted restaurants and more recently a childcare center that was closed in 2019. And that property too has been vacant with a deteriorating structure on it. So what both projects do is bring these long vacant sites back into productive reuse. They replace nonconforming commercial uses, which was the history of the sites, with conforming residential uses, and they do so with careful attention to detail and design. As was already discussed by the the project landscape architect, as well as the project architect at Union Studios, these, the sites were designed with a sense of scale, with a sense of compatibility, and with a sense of buffering. The features include pitched roofs, setbacks, recessed upper stories, and varied roof lines that break down the scale of the buildings. And the landscaping and buffering are integrated into both sites to soften their appearance, to protect view sheds from neighbor, towards neighbors, and enhance the public realm. Parking is pushed to the rear on both sites, which keeps the vehicles largely out of sight and allows the frontages to read as green space and landscaping. Both projects make good use of state owned frontage areas to provide additional landscape buffer areas along the intersection. So taken together, these design strategies mean the developments will not just fit in, in my opinion, they will improve the character of the intersection by replacing the vacant and deteriorated sites with attractive residential buildings that strengthen the neighborhood fabric. Now turning attention to the comprehensive plan. The 2022 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan is very clear on several points. It emphasizes the need to expand affordable housing opportunities, to promote infill and redevelopment of underutilized parcels, and to direct new growth in areas that are already supported by infrastructure, services, and transportation. Both the north and the south parcels are designated as urban development on the town's future land use map, and that designation signals the town envisions these areas accommodating higher intensity residential growth. Both sites are also located along Sprague Street and the plan identifies that as a minor arterial roadway. Minor arterials are intended to carry higher traffic volumes and connect principal roadways of East and West Main Road. And locating new housing along these corridors makes sense from a planning perspective. The roads are designed, the roads are specifically designed for higher intensity uses, and it minimizes impacts on the smaller local streets that are less equipped to handle additional traffic. When you match the language of the comprehensive plan, as detailed in my report, and I won't give any citations tonight, to the features of these two petitions, the alignment becomes clear. The proposals deliver what the plan envisions, affordable housing, infill development, redevelopment of long vacant sites, and compact growth in a location supported by infrastructure and services. So a couple of differences or nuances of each of the two sites. The south lot is the larger of the two and proposes the single three story 25 unit building. It's a mix of one, two, and three bedroom units. This is the building that also has some of the shared amenities. It has the shared gym and shared amenity space. Additionally, it'll have some surplus parking to help fill the needs if there's visitors or if there's a need for additional parking on that site. The site design includes a prominent landscaped green space at the corner and buffers to include, provide separation from nearby homes. The north lot is the smaller site. Here, the proposal is two separate buildings with 12 unit, a 12 unit walk up and three townhouse units. The design intentionally steps down the scale with lower eaves, recessed third stories, and townhouses that read as two and a half stories along the street frontage. Parking is accessed by a single curb cut, placed entirely at the rear, and there is significant landscaping provided along both frontages. So in short, the the south lot anchors, it's the larger of the two, larger structure, and it anchors this major intersection with a larger footprint and shared amenities, while the north lot reinforces the neighborhood scale with smaller buildings and townhouse forms. I believe, in my opinion, together, they provide a unified vision for the development of this intersection as a whole, and it does provide a visual improvement of this intersection with the quality of design. So just a summary, a couple summary statements, and then I'm going to read a couple of more tedious findings as it relates to the state law. In my professional opinion, these projects fully satisfy the statutory requirements for approval of a comprehensive permit. They exemplify the kind of high quality design, affordable housing that Portsmouth is seeking, and they meet the practical needs of the community. They transform long vacant, nonconforming commercial properties into attractive, functional residential communities, and they do so in a way that is sensitive to the surrounding neighborhoods while also addressing some of the town's most pressing needs. So I think that concludes those statements. I'm now going to read, and if with the permission of the board, I'm going to, instead of reading them twice for each of the two petitions, I believe the findings are very consistent between the two. But for the record, I'm going to read the actual language of the state law findings. I know you've heard it mentioned a few times individually. My role is to try to summarize, provide a conclusionary statements on the findings as they're as they're written. Required finding for a comprehensive permit, finding number one, the proposed development is consistent with local needs, as identified in the local comprehensive plan, with particular emphasis on the community's affordable housing plan, and/or has satisfactorily addressed the issues where there may be inconsistencies. So in my opinion, collectively, each project, the proposed development is consistent with the local needs, as identified in the comprehensive plan. They're offering 100% affordable housing. It's 15 units and 25 units respectively. And these are affordable housing levels that are often achieving lower income levels than the standard deed restricted affordable of 120%. You're getting some of those at 50% AMI. Required finding number two, the proposed development is in compliance with the standards and provisions of the municipality zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, and/or where adjustments are requested by the applicant, that local concern that have been affected by the relief granted do not outweigh the state and local need for low and moderate income housing. The proposed development will utilize waivers to zoning and land development standards to achieve the overall project design, and there is documentation on those necessary adjustments. And it is my opinion that the needs for affordable housing and the levels of affordable housing being provided do outweigh the adjustments in this case. Required finding number three, all low and moderate income housing units proposed are integrated throughout the development, are compatible in scale and architectural style to the market rate units within the project, and will be built and occupied prior to or simultaneous with the construction occupancy of any market rate units. It's a 100% affordable housing project. There's no need to integrate. So in this respect, we are conforming. There will be no significant negative impacts on the health and safety of current or future residents of the community in areas including but not limited to safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicle traffic, provision of emergency services, sewage disposal, availability of potable water, adequate surface water runoff, and the preservation of natural, historical, or cultural features that contribute to the attractiveness of the community. That's a range of different topics. The application includes a wealth of plans and supporting materials that show the project is designed in compliance with the applicable standards for environmental review, circulation and traffic impacts, emergency response, sewage, water, stormwater. Required finding number five, all proposed land developments and all subdivision lots will have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street in accordance with the requirements of Rhode Island State Law 45-23-60, Section A 5. I do find that there is suitable and adequate permanent physical access to public streets for both of the lots. Required finding number six, the proposed development will not result in the creation of individual lots with any physical constraints to development, that building on those lots, according to pertinent regulations and building standards, would be impractical unless created as a permanent open spacer permanently reserved for public purpose on the approved recorded plans. In this case, there's no creation of lots. In fact, they're merging lots, and the lots that will result most certainly do have physical access and no constraints, no landlocked lots being created. So that completes my presentation. I'm very happy to take any questions, and I'll ask if there's any redirection from Mr. Russell.
Any any questions for Mr. McLean? Mr. Russell, your witness? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, that is, that concludes the witnesses that we have to present testimony this evening in support of the applications. I understand you'll probably open it to public comment. If I could just request the opportunity at the conclusion of the public hearing to just give a couple of comments in closing before you commence your deliberations.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Hitchen, anything from the planning department before I open it up for public comment?
I would ask the applicant or somebody from the team to provide, for the record, a list of the adjustments or list of variances that are being requested with the application. Just just provide it for the record. I'm asking because it was not noted, and as a comprehensive permit, the planning board does grants adjustments as part of the application.
We'll get it on the record, Mr. Russell. Just state your name again, the record, please.
Mike Russell, LDEC Engineering Consulting with the civil engineering consultant on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you.
So each each waiver that's being requested are variants? Is that what we want to do for each lot? Okay. Let's see here. Okay, so for the north lot, Article 3, Division into Districts, Section D, Application of District Regulations, no building shall be erected except on a lot fronting a public street, and there shall not be more than one principal building on any lot except as allowed under the ordinance. So the north lot is seeking a variance under that section. Article 4, Density Intensity Regulations, again, sticking with the north lot, Section B, Land Space Requirements Table, the north lot is seeking a front yard setback from the required dimension, a side yard setback from the required dimension, and a rear yard setback from the required dimension. If I may, the same article, same section, for the south lot, we are seeking a front yard setback from the required dimension. Section A of the ordinance offsite, parking and loading with respect to the ordinance, seeking relief on the south lot under Section 3, minimum parking requirements for in in respect to the number of units and bedrooms identified in the in the ordinance. And that is for the north lot. Section 10 of the ordinance landscape requirements, we are seeking relief under Section 1. I believe that's section, if I have the correct section. The following percentages of interior parking area shall be suitably landscaped as described below. 15 to 50 spaces, 5%. We are providing zero, the, because of the parking deficit, this is just, excuse me, this is just providing as many spaces we can in the available area. So we are seeking relief from that section. Article 19, Low and Moderate Income Housing, Section F10 Development Standards for the north lot, we are seeking relief. Again, there's some overlap here. We have the zoning ordinance, and then we also have similar requirements dimensionally. Uh, similar uh, requirements dimensionally development standards for low and moderate, moderate income housing. The planner had asked us to identify, you know, for, for both. Seeking a front yard relief under that section for the north lot. We are seeking a side yard relief under that section for the north lot. We are seeking rear yard relief under that section for the north lot. And we are seeking uh, relief for maximum building and parking. Coverage percentage, so greater than forty percent for the north lot. Under that same section for the south lot. We are seeking a front yard uh, setback dimension. And we are seeking uh, maximum building and parking area coverage of greater than forty percent for the south lot. Under the same article, same section, um. Subsection G one, if served by an onsite sewer system with effluent being discharged into an onsite. Uh, absorption field, the minimum buildable land area per unit in square feet as follows. Uh, for R twenty, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom and additional bedrooms, we are seeking relief. Under that section for both the north and south lots. Uh, subsection. Oh, uh, one building design and location where more than one. Building is erected on a lot shall be separated from any other building by a minimum of one hundred feet. And all buildings shall be set back a minimum of fifty. Fifty-five feet from the center line of any interior way and thirty feet from any parking area. Uh, we do not meet that criteria on the north lot, therefore seeking a waiver. Same section, uh. Building design and location, item three, no apartment building shall be less than sixty feet in length. No facade or any apartment building shall exceed one hundred sixty linear feet without a building jog of at least. Forty-five degrees for a two wing building or thirty degrees for a three wing, wing building. We're seeking relief on the north lot from that requirement. Subsection four of building design and location, no one building shall contain. More than twenty-four units, we're seeking relief from that section on the south lot. Chapter fifty-three, Low and Moderate Income Housing, uh, procedure for approval and construction. Uh, meet revised parking counts per. Per residential one, I believe that's what that acronym is for. One space per unit up to two bedrooms, we're seeking relief from that section for the, for the north lot. And that is our summary of, of relief being requested.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Russell? Thank you. Any, anything else, uh, Ms. Hitchen from the planning department?
No, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If any members of the public would like to make a statement, please approach the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Thomas Laniers, one eighty-two West Main Road. And I also own property at four eighty-four Turnpike Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, um, my thing is water pressure. We've got that very large senior center that's being built right now. I have terrible water pressure where I am. If we put forty units at Turnpike Avenue, what's going to happen to my water pressure?
So I can't specifically.
No, I know. I'm, I'm just, I know you can't answer. I'm just presenting.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. My other thing is. The, I grew up on that corner. I ask anyone to try to make a left turn from Turnpike Avenue to West Main Road or from Bristol Ferry to Sprague Street. At almost any time of the day, you can't do it. Because of the traffic. And I just need to ask a, through you, I know.
Sure.
The gentleman that did the traffic study, could he restate what he said the length of Turnpike Avenue was?
Yes, well, we'll give the, we'll give the petitioner a chance to address your question.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because I believe he said Turnpike Avenue ran from East Main Road to Boyd's Lane and it does not. So if that could be corrected in the minutes. The, um, the other thing is blending in with the surroundings. I think the gentleman that just asked, says for all the waivers that you're, that they're asking for, that there's no way that fits where they want to put it. You're taking four house lots and you're going to multiply it by ten to have forty units in there. And the parking spaces, if you've got forty people with moderate income. To, to tell me that two people living in a one bedroom are going to have one car. I think is unreasonable. And if you have a two bedroom or a three bedroom, there's going to be more than two cars. There's no place to park on Sprague Street, there's no place to park on Turnpike, there's no place to park on Bristol Ferry, there's no place to park on West Main. Where are all these cars going to park? And then are they accounting for people visiting these people? I just think that the whole concept, I, you know, I, I grew up in Portsmouth. I've lived here all my life. I, I sympathize with the people who can't live here, but this is not a solution. There's other places to go or make this smaller. And why do we have a comprehensive plan that people were taught for? And now we're changing the zoning. We're taking four house lots of twenty thousand square feet. And we're allowing forty house lots into that same place. You know, to me, it doesn't make sense and, you know, I, I, with all due respect to you folks, I know you've got a big decision to make. Um, the other thing is like, all these setbacks and the sightline, looking at that drawing. The exit from, that's going to go into Turnpike Avenue. Looks like it's going to run right alongside the property line of that person that lives next door. To pull out of that driveway, because I've turned around in that area. To pull out of that driveway with the way that's planned, even to make a right turn. You're asking for a traffic problem. And I would ask the police department, the number of accidents that happen on that corner right now. Because a week doesn't go by without at least a close one, people going through the red light. And I think we all know the idea of Sprague Street being redone in the next year is. A pipe dream. And thank you for your, your time.
Just, just a moment, I, I, I can address a couple of this statements. So as far as the water, I don't know. The water pressure or the pressure that goes to your home, but I do know that we have a letter from the water department. It says they can adequately serve these, these parcels.
Okay.
After their analysis. On your question about the, um, the lot size and whatnot. We had state enabling legislation, legislation that was just passed over the last two years that actually allows what's, what this is called as a comprehensive permit. To be able to um, move along through the system, if you will. Because it does provide low and moderate income housing. That was state law that was passed over the last two years, Ms. Hitchen. So that's how this is allowed.
Right.
To, to proceed.
But does it have to be this big where they have to ask for all of these waivers?
Well, I'm, I'm going to let, I'm going to let the applicant address that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Please. I'm going to let, I'm going to let everyone speak, Mr. Russell, and then you can address it. Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Uh, Nate Seelig at thirty-five Sprague Court. Uh, I share a lot of uh, concerns as a, a previous gentleman. Um, with uh, the parking, I live on Sprague Court. We've had to have emergency vehicles at our house and our neighbors as well. When our neighbors have had visitors, uh, it's very difficult to get down there. If there's not enough parking and there's no parking on Turnpike and Sprague Street. The next closest spot is Sprague Court. And if they park there, emergency vehicles will have a problem. I'll, people on that street will have a problem leaving. Um, so that's one of my concerns. Um, the other concern that I share too is, is the water pressure issue. I, I know the. Uh, Department of Water says that they can service it. I'm curious what that definition actually is. I have thirty-five PSI at my house, coming in to my house, so. More volume out, uh, lower down will lower that. So additional concerns on the supply. The sightlines, uh, I understand attempting to soften the look. The limit in the ordinance is thirty-five feet, uh, fifty feet is forty-two percent above that. Uh, which is also twenty feet from the edge, so you. Are going to be looking at a wall, basically, anytime you go near that side of the street. Um, it is a, a large variance, a large ask in my opinion. Um, the variance on the. Uh, lot size, uh, the density, which is, I believe for twenty-five units with the. With the additional allowable variances for low, moderate income housing was, uh, needed a buildable lot of seventy-six thousand square feet. If I remember correctly, I did my math correctly there. The lot is sixty-three, uh, so that's a twenty, roughly twenty percent delta there. On that point, the need for a stormwater system to treat it. Uh, concerns me over the next increasing, uh, as storms increase exponentially through. Uh, the next decades, um, is that built into the system? Is there enough storage under there? I noticed on the pocket parking lot on the. Plan that there was four different storage tanks, I believe, um, with. The jellyfish supporting, uh, set between two of them on the. Side as I can't remember what size, the north side, west side, east side, I think it was. Um, it's a very big concern. I understand the, the need. Um, and again, with, uh, with my, my neighbor here, um. Does it have to be so big? Uh, the parking light, the parking lot lights, uh, will probably be seen from my house as well. Uh, which there's already a concern with light in that area. Uh, and, you know, as, as with, um, in the Article One, Section B. Uh, you know, subject in three there, we're, we're looking, the, the duty of the zoning community is to do an orderly growth. Um, and with the newest building not quite finished yet. And I haven't seen where other low to moderate income housing is being built. Uh, it, it's hard for me to say that this is orderly and, uh, not, uh, preventing overcrowding in. A very, in our area. Um, so that is, uh, another, uh, concern. Uh, just look at my notes. Yeah, I think, uh, you know, my biggest concerns is, you know, what I've said is, is a lot of variances. Um, needed to get this through. There's already, um. Allowable variances for this, uh, for the low to moderate income housing. That does allow for quite a lot of, of, uh, density, increased density in these lots, which is great. Um, but asking for more of that is, is, uh, in my opinion, a bit of a stretch. Um, at least at the twenty percent and the forty-two percent for the height. That is, um, is going to be. A, a very big, uh, impact, I think, in the area. And it will unfortunately stick out and not match the aesthetic of the area as well. Uh, having those two, well, I guess three with the new housing unit, very large new buildings built there. Yeah, I think that, uh, covers most of my concerns.
Well, thank you. So we'll, we'll, we'll have the applicant address the parking, the stormwater. I can tell you on the lighting piece, I mean, our, our requirement is that. We can't have light spilling off the property onto other parcels, so I think, I think that'll be mitigated.
Hopefully.
From, from that standpoint, but I'll, I'll let the applicant address the rest of the items unless any member of the board has a question for this. Um, testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosemary Gallagher, two seventy-one Sprague Street. I'm the entire side backend of the property. And the potters that were here earlier, they also butt right in the back at the narrow section there. There's a few concerns. Parking, of course, because where they're going to park, if they go up Sprague Street is in my yard. It happens. We just asked them to move, but I'm not going to be chasing people all the time. The other thing is people passing through and cutting through the yard. We already have that problem with some individuals that think it's okay to just walk across. Unfortunately, if they get hurt, then they come after us. Potters have the same thing. We're asking for at least some type of buffering, a fence or something to go to the, that entire side. And then it's a little jog out near the septic that the potter zone. We all kind of meet at that point. There is going to be a lot, I mean, I know at this point, I've checked with the state, there's not much we can do about a lot of it. But the building is huge that is going on that little piece of property. I mean, they're going to be sitting in my yard, basically. And we just want that to be considered because. It's, I would love for the rats and everything to be going out of that building because there are. We know this for a fact, so it could be bulldozers would be better. But putting that many spaces. Into that, that many buildings and housing into that small lot. And I mean, looking at, I know the percentage has to be for affordable housing. What is the pricing on that affordable housing? Are people still going to be able to afford it? Because we are in Portsmouth, everything is higher. I just want all that to be considered. I mean, obviously, we all have the water and. The traffic and, and once if they, when they do do Sprague Street, it's going to be a racetrack. It already is. It go, and until they hit that corner, there's people flying up there every day. So it's not just something, and you definitely don't want people crossing the street down in that dark area. Because as soon as they whip around that corner, they're not going to see anybody. So unless they're. Crossing at that light. And Bristol Ferry to Turnpike or Sprague Street to Turnpike, nobody's going to see them. So considering that other property as extra parking is dangerous. There's just no two ways about it without some type of other lighting. About conversation. I'm tired.
So, um, well, are you, are you, any other?
No.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Gallagher? So I just wanted to be clear though, that the, the, the folks that cut across your property, they're doing it on, on, on your west, the west side of your parcel. Onto the east side of this parcel, is that correct?
Where their property.
Okay.
It's.
So we'll get, we'll get them.
Break down that, you know.
Sure. I know they've got some plantings and buffer strip plantings planned. I'll let those, those folks address that, but there is, they are on the plan.
Yeah, and well, and if they're parking towards my house. They're end up going to be moving over. They used to use that back in years and years ago. When it was cows and, you know, the rest of the places, because our family's owned the house for. A hundred years, something like that. And if you leave that without anything. Stopping them from going up there, they're going to keep moving up. And I don't want them in my yard.
Sure.
Or my septic system.
Yeah, no, and I, I did, as you were talking, I did look at the plan and it does show curb stops there, so they, it will stop them. On the paved area and it does look like there's a, a buffer zone, but I'll let the applicant address that.
Yeah, that was our concern because we didn't see a lot of it on the, on the plans.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Any other abutters would like to address this petition? Okay, Mr. Russell, I'll let you, um, oh, is this online? Okay, please.
If there's anybody online that would, um, like to speak to this application, if you could virtually raise your hand so I can elevate you. If there's anybody online that would like to speak to this application, if you could virtually raise your hand so I can elevate you. Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay. I think we have one more in the back. Please, please, ma'am, step up your name and address for the record, please.
Annabelle De Souza, thirty-five Sprague Court. My husband came up before. I said a couple of things I was just thinking of. The population increase of ninety-five plus, I don't really know what, how that is figured. When.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, the population increase of ninety-five plus, I don't know what the plus is, but it just doesn't really quite make sense to me when there are forty units and many of them are more than one bedroom. So I was wondering how they determine that number for increase of population. And then, as previous people have said, to assume that there wouldn't be more than one car per household isn't really realistic for our area. Sprague Court is right, right behind, and everyone on my street, and no one on my street has a four-bedroom house, they're all quite small. Everyone has at least two cars except for one. Okay, so that, that already is, you know, that seems more realistic, that there's gonna be more than one car, okay? And we are the closest one-way. Oh, sorry, we are the closest dead end, and there's only dead ends all the way up Sprague Court, sorry, Sprague Street. Overflow will end up on our street, and as my husband's pointed out, that is a problem, because our street is quite narrow. Currently, I'm waiting at the bus stop with my daughter at the end of the street, and it is kind of a blind spot as well. So that is problematic. If people park on our street all the way to the end, which would be technically legal, it would be extremely difficult to see, to get out of our street or to enter our street. And if they are parking on even just one side of our road, that makes the road almost like one-half lanes. So that's really problematic, especially when there's emergency vehicles. We've lived there since two thousand and twenty-one. And in that time, we've had two ambulances come up our street to our house for our son. So it is problematic if emergency vehicles cannot come up, okay? Or exit in a timely manner without having to ask everyone to move, okay? Other things, the aesthetic, it, these are massive buildings that they're putting on a very small lot. On the side, the picture, it looks like quite a big a land, and like, it sounds like a decent side of its land. But if you actually go there, it's not a very large piece of land. So to say that these buildings will match the aesthetic, it doesn't really quite make sense, because as I've already said, we live right on the street next door, and there's no houses that big or even three stories. Even if you want to say it's two and a half, using attic space to make it three, it's still a three-story building, and as my cousin pointed out, it's extremely tall. So I don't think sloped roofs and double-hung windows are going to make it match the aesthetic of the area. I think it's just gonna look like two huge buildings on a very small quarter. And that's it. So I just want, so that's kind of what I have to say.
So thank you. I will have the applicant address the things that are specific to this lot. I can't ask them to address things on Sprague Court, because it's not part of this petition, and it really would be unfair for them.
With the allotted spaces, someone had said, are you gonna assign spaces?
We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that too. So.
Yeah, okay.
But, but thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address this petition? Okay, Mr. Russell, you're back up, or Mr. Belden.
Christian Belden, Community Housing, Fifty Washington Square, Newport, Rhode Island. I I'll let some of the rest of my team answer, address some of the comments, but I'll start with the question about density. Why this many units at this location? And so the the bigger picture here is this is the first step. In order for us to be able to produce any affordable housing, we, the two things have to happen. You have to get permitting approval, and then you have to get it funded. And we have a massive housing crisis in the state. And there is very limited funding resources available to address that crisis. And so what that means is that there is a tremendous amount of pressure on the funders to produce as many units of affordable housing as possible with those limited resources. And so once we get approval, we then have to submit an application to the funders that has at least a better than fifty percent chance of getting funded. And so that's the calculation that we're doing. What is the minimum number of units that we have to provide to achieve an economy of scale that gives us a better than fifty percent chance of getting the funding awarded? And that's what this is. And it's it's not what everybody else would do. Because as you know, the comprehensive permit allows you to propose relief from most anything. And I know I've worked with other attorneys in the past that have worked with large for-profit developers that use the comprehensive permit as a tool. They provide the minimum amount of affordable housing necessary, twenty-five percent, and then they propose huge developments that are massively out of scale for the neighborhood, because they're optimizing profit. We've been in business since nineteen sixty-nine, and so we are always trying to be as sensitive to the local community, to the context that we operate in, but there's absolutely no point in us spending our time and money to propose a development that has no chance in getting funded. And so that's why. Because we want to propose a development that could actually get built someday. And fewer units, it's not gonna happen. In terms of the pricing, it also goes to that second step in the process, which is the funders. Presently, we have a fully built-out development pro forma, and the pricing that is included in that ranges from a hundred thousand dollars for a one-bedroom unit for persons earning fifty percent of area median income, all the way up to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a four-bedroom unit for persons earning a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. So this is, in a very real sense, a mixed-income development. That said, the funders will have their say. And so I can't commit, guarantee that that is where the pricing will end up, but that's what we're targeting at this point in time. With respect to the parking, all I can say is that every development that we propose, we rely very heavily on the ITE standards, the International Traffic Engineer guidelines for parking. And we compare it against reality, right? We own seven hundred units of affordable housing and in thirty different locations. And so whenever we propose a new development, we look at the other developments that we have and the unit count there, and how many parking spaces we have there, and how many cars are actually parked at that development. And I can say with, with a lot of confidence that what we find is that the ITE is incredibly accurate. That being said, we're providing a substantial percentage of surplus parking above what the ITE is requiring. And so, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Bannon talk about, you know, does the ITE take into consideration guests? I believe it does. And, you know, its reliability further. And then with respect to the, the the population count, I'll let Stephanie Booker address that, and with respect to the buffering and the fencing, I'll let Melissa, our landscape architect, address those.
I forgot to, I just forgot to remind you, you were still under oath at the time you spoke to, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Booker, I'll do in the beginning, I'll remind you, you're still under oath. Did we get a copy of Ms. Booker's presentation? I don't recall seeing it.
This she, this is the presentation that she provided today.
Okay.
I can definitely share it with you afterwards.
Thank you.
We didn't go into great detail with this. This explained how you got to your ninety-five. Is this what you want?
So, no, I actually want to go back to the chart. Because the chart actually breaks down by bedroom count, based on the chart. Yep, yep. So the chart on the bottom is actually the numbers that we use to calculate, and this is based off the US Census data that we go by for trying to calculate how many individuals will live in a development. So, you know, these numbers are used by essentially everybody to try and come up with the resident count for development. So it's not ninety-five plus, we're estimating ninety-five. And it's based on bedroom count, and then the average household size, and that's how you get to that number. So on each one of these spots on, on the pie chart, you'll see for each of the different bedroom counts. Can you go to the pie chart for me?
Oh, sorry.
Nope, no problem. There you go. It lists out, based on that chart on the right-hand side, how many residents we're expecting based on bedroom size, and then the average household size that the US Census provides as a guideline. Can I answer anything else regarding that?
Any, any?
Nope.
Anything else you would like to add?
No, not regarding that, that's.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, happy to have Paul Bannon come back up, and if it's the board's pleasure to drill down a little further on some of the parking issues in relation to ITE and what variables are factored into sort of how he arrived at that. Before that, I do want to just point out one thing, though, before Mr. Bannon speaks to that as it relates to parking, just sort of as a reminder. The, you know, the statute in relation to the comprehensive permit also addresses parking, and it specifically states, I mean, municipalities shall not require more than one off-street parking space per dwelling unit for units up to and including two bedrooms in applications submitted under this chapter. And just as a reminder, of the forty total units, thirty-one of them are one or two bedrooms. So of the forty units, thirty-one, the most that can be required by the municipality is one parking space. So when you take that in the context of what Mr. Bannon's gonna offer you, I think that speaks to how the project meets the parking requirements of the statute, and I think Mr. Bannon can illuminate how the project also meets, from a practical point of view, the practical day-to-day demands of a development this size.
Thank you. So from my notes, and just to remind you, you're under oath too, sir.
Yes.
I think some of the things were about the visitor parking and also the onsite parking and the ITE, if you could just elaborate on those in addition to what else you're gonna discuss.
Yes, for the record, Paul Bannon, Crossman Engineering. The ITE for the multifamily use, the rate is one point three one, which would translate into fifty-three parking spaces required. That includes residents and guests. So we have, we're proposing sixty-seven spaces between the two lots. So based on ITE and what Mr. Belden said, relative to what he's experienced at his other sites, and translating that the ITE with actual practical demands that his other sites are sufficiently parked. My experience with multifamily communities in, with hundreds of units, their target, their management target is between one point five and one point seven five. So their for a management company with an apartment complex of two hundred to four hundred units, their goal is to provide enough parking for their tenants, so they'll get complaints in need to provide additional parking. Decades of experience with, with those facilities, their target is one point five to one point seven five. As Mr. Belden had indicated, thirty-one of these are one and two-bedroom units, so that plus they're targeted. We're on a bus route. Vehicles becoming, have become very expensive, so this is a low to moderate income development. Having two vehicles for those smaller units is a luxury, so people adapt. People work from home, so, you know, those are the things that result in the, in the lowered demand, you know, people say, well, there's two, you know, two cars in every home. The requirement for a single-family home is two vehicles. And multi-unit developments don't require typically two vehicles, so. And again, you know, they'll look into their experience, that they don't feel that they'll have that overflow need, and they have the ability to manage the parking accordingly. I don't know if you have any questions on that further? I addressed the Turnpike Ave driveway that was brought up.
And, and the traffic on, I believe you said there was a, there was a malfunctioning traffic signal, so maybe that's got something to do with this.
Yeah, well, the, the loop detector on West Main is malfunctioning. That was caught, that has been causing delays on that approach that I don't know how long people have been experiencing it, but that was my witness. Relative to Turnpike Ave, his, the residents' concerns about turning left, and that was what I identified. And that's why we proposed to restrict left turns out of that site. All left turns will be made safely at the intersection, which is actually West Main and Sprague is split-phasing, meaning you don't go like Turnpike and Bristol Ferry does, that they go concurrently. West Main and Sprague is split, so they have their own separate phases, and they don't interact with each other. So it'll provide for a safe left turn onto Turnpike Ave from these, these properties. The sightlines, they are restricted today because of the old hedges and vegetation that actually blocking the sidewalk. You can't walk along that frontage. They'll all be removed as part of this project there along our frontage, and will be, that'll all be re-landscaped with proper landscaping treatments that'll provide the adequate sight distances at that location.
On school buses, since they'll, let's say, assuming there's only one car, they won't have the parent that sits in traffic to bring their kids to school. Is there specific areas where these twenty or thirty kids will be getting lined up for buses in the morning?
That would be coordinated with the school department, where this school bus stop, I believe, one resident indicated, it's there was a bus stop at the top of Sprague Court. Relative to the pedestrian access and, and crossing. If you look at the site plans, each of the site plans provide direct connections to the sidewalk along Bristol Ferry and Turnpike that provide that complete link between buildings at the crosswalk. So we've allowed, you know, people don't have to cross that that, come out of the front door, there's a sidewalk that directs them right to the street sidewalk to the crosswalk, and then back on the other side to each building, frontage. So we've looked at the pedestrian pathways to provide that safe crossing.
So they'll have a mix of people that will be getting the regular public transit to go to work and the school buses all at that same time at the four-way intersection. It's gonna be a little tight.
No, well, the Sprague, the bus stop is on, on Sprague.
Okay.
The, the bus route is on Bristol Ferry, Turnpike, at different stops along the way.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Bannon? Thank you. If you gotta come up to the podium, you can't, you can't go from the back there, sir.
I just have two questions, a couple of questions, if I could.
You have to state your name.
I'm sorry, Thomas Laneres, one eighty-two West Main Road. And I own a property on four eighty-four Turnpike Avenue. Okay, on just a clarification, I was not referring to the left turn coming, going into Turnpike Avenue. I'm referring to, what line of sight do you have if you're trying to make a right turn from that parking lot to Turnpike Avenue? How far out onto the sidewalk do you have to go before your driver's door has a line of sight of Turnpike Avenue?
Okay. Was that the only question?
No.
Go ahead.
It's also for the same.
Give me a little latitude here, so, please.
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
I'll ask the second one as well.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, could I call up the diagram of the parking?
For the north lot or the south lot?
Both if possible. Or one at a time.
Which parcel, the south one? Sorry, sorry. It's getting late.
There we go.
If I can just go closer.
Sure. Yeah, go right ahead. You have to talk into the microphone, please.
There are 67 parking spaces, correct?
Provided, yes.
I don't see any handicap spaces that are double the size of a standard parking space.
So I, 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 I see handicap parking, there's two on this and there's at least one on the other lot that I know.
Okay, so is that, then there are going to be three handicap spots for 40 residences? Okay, that's my question. Okay, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Jackson.
Paul, can you address those questions again, please?
Paul Bannon, Crossman Engineering. As I had referenced, that large hedge line along our property frontage is going to be removed completely. Right now, you can barely walk on the sidewalk. It encroaches upon the, the town could actually, oh, it's actually state properties, but the town could actually trim those back to the, the property line. So as to restrict it, but they're going to be removed as part of this application. So proper sightlines, roadways, flat, straight. So you should be able to, to see safely to make that right turn.
Thank you.
Lastly, I don't know if you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you wanted any additional information about screening or a little more details regarding the.
I would, that'd be great. Because we did have a question on, from the butter, the Gallaghers, which would have been to the.
On the north lot.
North lot, the west side, please.
So that's that small section between that little bump out. Melissa DeJardin, 456 Water Street, that small section that's kind of bumped out, that.
Correct.
Okay. So that would be, if you scroll up a little bit, there's probably a picture of a fence. Unfortunately, we don't have, because of the septic, I can't plant there. So we would do a solid fence with or without a lattice top. And we could go all the way to, with a six-foot solid. But it's kind of nice to have that lattice on the top there. Yeah, unfortunately, we can't, we can't have the trees interfere with the septic there, so.
So is the fence going the entire length of that, that property line?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the concept is where I can't plant, there's fencing. Unless, unless there's a need, if someone requires both. But it's usually nice to see green more than a fence, so.
Just to answer this, a butter's question, that there should be no way for someone to cut across their property into your parcel unless they use the entrances, because you're going to have a fence up.
There would be a fence.
Great. Thank you. I'm trying to give you some latitude, but we.
No, it's just, could I have the question answered of the three parking spaces? Oh, Thomas Lenares.
The handicap, yeah, we're going to get the handicap, absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, take a, take a detour here. Mike Russell, LDC Engineering and Consulting. I need to correct the record on the variance request. If I can, there was one that was not mentioned.
Sure.
We can just add that in. So the Chapter 405 zoning, Article 4, District Intensity Regulations, Section B Land Space Requirements Table for Building Height. For both the north and south lot, we're seeking relief for building height. And then similarly, for under Article 19, Low and Moderate Income Housing, Section F10 Development Standards, subsection J, Maximum Building Height, two-and-one-half stories, not to exceed 35 feet. We are seeking relief under that section for both the north and south lot.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just have a moment, I'm going to discuss the handicap space with.
No problem, thank you.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, Mike Russell, LDC Engineering Consulting. So for the, the requirement for handicap parking is one for every 25 spaces. So on the north lot, we're providing 19 total spaces. So we have to provide one handicap space. For the south lot, we're providing 48 spaces, so we're providing two.
So three total.
Three, three total for both projects.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Jackson.
Board, have any other questions of any of the development team?
Any questions from the board? So I will say that we, I don't know if you got copies of the, the board, the staff report. So we did get, and I don't know how the board's going to, what the board's going to vote tonight, but we did get a recommendation from the, the planning staff that we continue to the October 9th meeting because of the additional data that was received today that the board has not had a full chance to take a look at. I know we had testimony to it.
Right.
But there are some items that still need to be reviewed. And I would like to get a copy of Ms. Booker's presentation sent to us all, too.
Okay.
I don't recall seeing that yet, but I don't know how the boards want to vote, but I wanted to get that out for you right now.
All right. So would it please the board then to, if it's your intention to continue this to the 9th, I can hold off any additional comment and we can make the team available for additional questions on the 9th and then we'll close it at that point?
I'm just, I'll, I'll see if there's a motion from the board to, to do that. Is that? Make a motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to continue this preliminary plan to October 9th, 2025 meeting before moving on to the final.
So you got a motion made in second. Before we vote, is that acceptable to you?
I just have one other, I mean, I understand the public hearing needs to remain open for us to come back and provide you additional testimony.
Correct.
The only question is, is the public comment period closed? Or is that going to be, is that going to remain open at the next hearing as well?
I'm going to refer to what council is.
I think it would allow to remain open as well. I think the only thing we can maybe do to accommodate is, is have staff talk to the, the board members who may have questions based on the more recent data submissions. And if the entirety of your team doesn't have to come, we'll try to let you know.
And I am, Mr. Jackson, I am sensitive to that. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to try and stifle the public comment. But I am, I, I did jot down all the notes that, that our butters so kindly provided. So we shouldn't have to revisit those again.
Yeah, Christian Beltland Church Community Housing, 50 Washington Square. I, I knew that the recommendation was to continue it and I understood why because there was a lot of information that was coming in right up until today. But I felt like we've presented that information and covered the, the topics and comments and questions and concerns. And so now I'm left feeling with, I'm unclear on what else we need to address that would warrant continuing it until next time? I'd just like to know what those, because, because now we'll need to, to resubmit with those issues addressed. And I feel like we've really addressed everything that's come up so far. So I'd just like to be prepared, knowing exactly when we leave here, if you are going to continue it, what else we need to provide in between now and the next meeting.
I, I think the mid, and I'm just speaking for myself, but I think the majority of the questions that came up were concerning parking, traffic, Mr. Bannon's report, which we, we did just get. And then those specifically seem to be some of the abutters concerns as well. So I mean, I would, at the very least, I'd like to have him back here for the next meeting. But I'll leave that up to you and your council to decide. And if there's any other kind of board members that have a comment on that, I'm open to suggestions. Hearing none, how about Ms. Hitchen? Anything that you'd like to see specifically?
I honestly haven't had time to thoroughly vet Mr. Bannon's report. I mean, he did a good job presenting it tonight, but I haven't, I'd like to digest the report with me reading it. I just haven't had the, the time to.
Sure.
To read it today.
So before we take the, our vote, then how about if we allow Ms. Hitchen to get in touch with Mr. Jackson? And if there's anything else that comes up, we'll, we'll let you know specifically. But from what I'm seeing, it's parking, traffic, Mr. Bannon probably can, after we get a chance to digest his report. That's what the bulk of the questions are. Is that okay?
I mean, I'd like them to prove it tonight.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion made in second to continue to the October 9th meeting. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Petition continued.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I don't believe we have anything else on our agenda. We got a motion to adjourn by Mr. Harding, seconded by Mr. Garso. All in favors, up. Oh, I thought she said adjourned.
Heather's not in charge.
Adjourn, okay.
We do have probably another second meeting that we have to do in October due to assigned ordinance that.
Okay.
We have, so in addition to a heavy docket in October, for October 9th, I'm asking for your availability on the 23rd or 30th. So if you could just look at your calendar.
I think I'm available on the 30th.
Say no 30th?
I, I said I can do the 30th. That's October 30th.
Take care, Chip. 30, don't you have to get ready for like Halloween, Luke?
31st is Halloween.
Thumbs up or thumbs down for us? How about 23rd? 23rd, 23rd.
23.
Dave? 23rd?
Yeah, I can, I can do the 23rd.
Kate? Don? Okay, 23rd.
Hi, ma'am.
Hello, Stephanie.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, okay.
Is counsel available on the 23rd?
I'm available, but Attorney Larissa has been the one working on the sign ordinance. So I'm going to see if he's available.
All right. Now we can adjourn?
Yes.
All right.
And Mr. Chair, can I just make a procedural note before we all go home? On, on, just as a practical matter, the, when, when you call for the vote, you get a, for a second, a motion in a second.
Yes.
Before the vote, if you could just ask for discussion among the board.
Sure.
Just to give anyone an opportunity to chime in.
I tried to do that, I must have missed one then.
That's okay, I, that's all right. I, I just, this is just such a big issue. I think we should be sticklers on those things.
Got it, thank you. There's, there's no discussion, all in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, there you go. All right.